Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Scott County Board of Adjustment, being held at the Spring Lake Town Hall, two oh three eight one Fairlon Avenue, Prior Lake, Minnesota, Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at six thirty P. M. Uh, first item on the agenda is roll call. Um, Planning Advisory Commissioner Donna Hentges.
Here.
Gary Hartman here. Ray Huber, absent.
Ed Robbie.
Here.
Barbara Johnson.
Here.
Lee Watson.
There.
Tom Vonhoff.
Here.
Also in attendance, county staff, Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Nathan Hall, associate planner, Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board, and our Scott County Commissioner, Tom Wolfe, is in attendance, live. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the August ninth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Adjustment minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Vonhoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries six zero. Uh, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Redeemer Lutheran Church variance, P. L. number two oh two one dash zero seven eight. It's a request for variance from the required sixty-foot setback to the rear property line to thirteen point five feet to construct an accessory building. It's located Section thirty-four, Blakely Township. Current zoning is A. One, and Nathan Hall will present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as you noted, the, uh, property is located in Section thirty-four of Blakely Township and zoned A. One. It's located just north of, uh, Highway nineteen. It is surrounded by, uh, large agricultural fields. So this is at the very south end of the county. Uh, La Sura County is just across the roadway. You can see the, uh, main church building here, cemetery. The subject is located towards the east of the site. And their parking lot is located here. The building in question is just over to the, uh, west of the, uh, main building. Uh, the applicant is proposing the construction of a new storage building, uh, to replace the existing, uh, storage building that has been existing for many decades. Uh, the applicant has proposed a twenty-four by twenty-four-foot structure, uh, in approximately the same location as the existing storage building. Now, this proposed building is not a residential structure, and therefore we cannot, uh, allow them to rebuild, um, without a variance with the residential accessory building. They would be able to rebuild on the same. Um, however, this is not a residential, uh, accessory building, so we are not permitting that, and they are going through the variance process. Uh, the building would be used for general storage and operation of the church. Uh, while the subject property is a legal non-conforming parcel, uh, in the agricultural preservation district, while the congregation has existed for over a hundred and fifty years, uh, the original church building, uh, the original, uh, church building, uh, burned and was rebuilt in the late nineteen forties, uh, within several feet of the northern property line. In two thousand and six, the congregation proposed the construction of a social hall at eight and a half feet, uh, from the northern property line. Uh, a variance from the rear yard setback was approved in August of two thousand and six, along with a conditional use permit to operate, uh, church in agricultural preservation district. Uh, the intent is to place the new structure five feet, um, further from the northern property line than the social hall was built. Uh, there is a discrepancy between the recent measurements provided by the applicant and the distances that were provided in the two thousand and six application. Um, there hasn't been a new survey, um, completed at this time. Uh, the public hearing notices have described the proposed distance as thirteen and a half feet rather than the eighteen feet that the applicant was hoping to application. We've got a precaution, uh, a button precaution regarding that. And, uh, the environmental services department, uh, has no concerns with the placement of the structure. Uh, the subject is, uh, far away from the proposed building site. Uh, the environmental, and, uh, there is no concern with future developments on the neighboring properties being, uh, inhibited by the placement of the new building, either if it's a very rural location. Uh, Blakely Township did make a recommendation, uh, of approval on August third, uh, two thousand twenty-one, as was, uh, attached to the staff report. And, uh, Scott County staff is recommending approval of the requested variance, uh, for the criteria listed in the staff report. Uh, the applicant is, is present, if you might be, here, at least.
Thank you, Nathan. Is there any, uh, questions for Nathan from the board?
Mr. Chairman, even if La Sura County across the road, and it doesn't look like there's any parcels or houses or anything on. So do we have to send notices out to anybody then?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, uh, we do send out, uh, public hearing notices, um, to everyone within, uh, for variances within a five-hundred-feet, uh, radius. So if somebody is, uh, even in a different county, in a different jurisdiction, the property owners there would receive, uh, a notice.
We do that. Like I said, we can't see the other sides. We don't, I don't know if there's parcels or. There isn't, it's just a big farm.
Yep, uh, there's farm land around it, right?
So then, we didn't really have to.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, even if there is not a home on the parcel, uh, we would still send a notice to the landowner.
To the landowner, okay.
Any other questions for Nathan? If not, this is a public hearing. If someone would like to address this issue, please step up to the podium, sign in your name and address, and state your case. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So much.
Motion by Commissioner Vonhoff, second by Commissioner Robbie. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Public hearing is closed in the six to zero vote. Um, did you say the applicant is here, Nathan?
Applicants.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, thank you, 'cause, uh, I've been going out there for years in the wintertime, uh, to get corn from the Scott County pheasants forever that use your parking lot. And one thing I've noticed, the church and everything is meticulously clean and perfect. And, uh, when the s- s- pheasant forever guys are done loading out all that corn to everybody, they make sure every kernel is off that parking lot. Anyway, thank you for everything you do for, for, uh, Scott County pheasants forever. Okay, other than that, I'll entertain a, a motion somewhat.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for granting a variance, I recommend approval of the requested variance to reduce the required sixty-foot setback, setback to the rear property line to thirteen and a half feet to construct an accessory building.
Did you wanna mention, uh, Blakely Township?
Yeah, yeah, we could. And also, uh, attached to that, that the, uh, Blakely Township approved, uh, the dimensions of the building and, uh, the, uh, the variance.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Robbie. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, uh, this, I'll entertain a motion to close the Scott County Board of Adjustment.
Almost.
Motion by Commissioner, um, Pre- uh.
Hentges.
Hentges. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbie. Hearing, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. This meeting is adjourned.
I now call to order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, six thirty-five P. M., Spring Lake Town Hall, two oh three eight one Fairlon Avenue, Prior Lake, Minnesota. Our, uh, first item is our roll call and introductions. I will call the roll. Uh, Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Huber, absent. Commissioner Robbie.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Vonhoff, here. In addition, uh, we have, uh, across at the podium across us, Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, and Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and Barb Simonson. Our, uh, deputy clerk to the board is over at that table there. And in the audience, I see our, uh, Commissioner, County Commissioner Tom Wolfe is present with us as well. I know that we do have a, a virtual link and aware of, but I do not believe there's anyone on there at this time. Okay, thank you. Um, the first, uh, item of business is the approval of the August ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes and the special meeting minutes from July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. The commissioners have all been, uh, sent, uh, copies of those minutes and are prepared to review for them, to review those. Are there any corrections or deletions in the minutes as printed? I will, and if there are not, I will entertain one motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept. Did you indicate both?
Yes.
To the, accept both minutes or, uh, minutes from both meetings.
Okay, I have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Robbie. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
I have a second by, uh, Commissioner Hentges. I will, uh, call, uh, not a roll call vote, but a, uh, a voice vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The minutes are approved by an unanimous vote of commissioners present. The next item is our consent agenda. All items con- on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate, uh, discussion of these items unless a planning commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. We have one item this evening, uh, that's being considered on the consent agenda, and that's the Wayne Weldon rezoning. That's, uh, our, uh, planning, uh, number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven nine. It's requested for a rezoning of forty acres from A. One Agricultural Preservation, Preservation District to A. Three Agricultural Preservation Density District. Location is Section twenty-one, Blakely Township, and current zoning is A. One. Would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Uh, seeing, uh, that no one liked it removed, that we will approve the consent agenda, which will mean that we will approve this request with the approval of the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
I approve your approval of consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Robbie. I will call, uh, by, uh, roll, uh, the votes on this. Commissioner Hentges.
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner Huber. Is absent. Uh, he will not be voting. Commissioner Robbie.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Von, Commissioner Vonhoff, yes. Consent agenda is approved, and the Wayne Weldon rezoning is approved. So if you're here for that item, uh, that has been approved. Our next item is a public hearing. This is the Northern National Gas Company application to request for a conditional use permit to construct a natural, natural gas metering station. Location is Section twenty, New Market Township, and the current zoning is U. E. R., U. E. R. dash, dash C. rather. And, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Hall will be making the staff presentation. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair. The, uh, subject property is located in the northeast of the southeast of Section twenty in New Market Township. And, uh, the parcel is thirty-five acres of productive crostland. Uh, the subject site is located in the southwest corner of that property, it's a one-point-two-acre acre leased area. Uh, the applicant, um, and, uh, it's just north of James Parkway here. This is actually, um, a city roadway that goes out to the city property that contains school. The, uh, city limits are just over here. And the applicant, uh, describes the proposal of the town border station that would serve as a custody transfer point, uh, between Northern Natural Gas and the local gas providers. Uh, facility will also replace a metering station that is currently within the city limits. Uh, proposal includes four structures. Um, it would include a ten-by-ten regulator building. It would include a, uh, twenty-one-by-twenty-one regulator slash meter building. And also, there'd be two, uh, twenty-five foot, uh, twenty-five by twenty-five-foot areas that would be allotted for the construction of buildings that would house equipment for the applicant's customers. Uh, the station is, uh, considered an essential services facility, and, uh, according to the Scott County zoning ordinance, that is a conditional use in the urban expansion reserve cluster district.
Yeah.
Uh, specific requirements, uh, for the facility include a higher minimum, uh, setback for about fifty feet for the utility buildings from property lines. And, uh, uh, the property also is required to be fenced to prevent public hazard and provide for adequate access, provide for adequate parking. Um, the building interiors and landscaping must also comply with Chapter Four of the Scott County zoning ordinance. And the applicant has provided, uh, provided different documents in your packet there to, uh, demonstrate their meeting, uh, those requirements. Uh, the applicant has proposed a double row of spruce trees to act as a twenty-foot wide buffer around most of the site. Uh, the city of Elko New Market has requested a thirty-foot buffer along, uh, James Parkway, uh, with, uh, vegetation, lower vegetation here that would not intrude into their bike path. And, uh, the city of Elko New Market has not raised any concerns about access to the facility. Uh, Scott County Environmental Services has reviewed the information, uh, that has been submitted and sees no issues with the request. And, uh, Natural Resources Department has also reviewed the plan and, uh, notes that they appear to meet all the, uh, Scott County requirements. Uh, the, uh, applicant will be installing, uh, two of the buildings and the applicant's clients would be installing, uh, two additional structures. Uh, the building inspections department will not be inspecting, uh, those structures, uh, as they're part of the interstate pipeline. Um, and we will not be, uh, it's the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and along with the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration that, uh, regulates, uh, pipeline safety. And, uh, we will not be, uh, duplicating that. And, uh, Northern Natural Gas did provide a letter, uh, on August eleventh, uh, that was provided, uh, to you, uh, in your folders, uh, this evening. Uh, the applicant attended a September seventh meeting, um, of New Market Township. The New Market Township recommendation, uh, was at your desk as you arrived this evening. Uh, the chair of the town board is present tonight to answer any questions that you might have regarding, uh, that recommendation. And, uh, subject to the, uh, conditions of approval listed in the staff report, staff represents approval of the conditional use permit, uh, based on the eight criteria that were listed in the staff report. I'll stand by for the questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hall this morning? Commissioner Harvard.
Nate. Is the New Market Township Board suggesting they move it over then? Three, uh, some more to the east?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman, um, they are suggesting that the facility be, uh, located three hundred feet further from the western property line. And I believe that, uh, the, Mr. Clark, chairman of the board, is, is present tonight.
Two X.
And will be able to give more.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'd like to hear what he'd have to say on that. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to.
Commissioner Johnson.
To add, piggyback onto what Mr. Hartman said. In the August eleventh letter, it says, "That being said, I must point out that state, county, and local authorities may not prohibit, restrict, or limit the construction or dictate the location of the facility." So who has the most power here?
Um, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, um, so Scott County is, um, we are not, uh, in a position to regulate the, the siding of it or the safety component of it. Uh, but we still can apply some of our, our standards regarding, uh, that are in Chapter sixteen regarding screening, uh, aesthetic, asset, uh, provide those different, uh, considerations.
I'm just referring to the township recommendation. The township wants one thing, that they are, the Natural Gas Company says we may not restrict them. And they're a local authority. Right.
That's how we view that letter, that the, the pipe of the, uh, Northern Natural Gas, uh, will be looking to the federal regulations when it comes to siding.
So they don't have to move it.
They have the authority.
Okay.
Um, and that's if county wants to challenge that, so if we're recommending approval, that's what's proposed.
Okay.
Just on that's clear. Thank you for, for that. It's, it's difficult for people to understand with the, with, uh, interstate, uh, services on how they're regulated, that who's the regulatory agency that actually has authority to replace them, but.
Um, can you have Barb, would she speak up a little bit? She's hard to hear down here. I've been troubling when she says.
Sorry, thank you.
I was asking about the letter on August eleventh, said that, uh, Northern Natural Gas says they may, we may not prohibit, restrict, or limit the construction or dictate the location of the facilities. And New Market Township is recommending moving at three hundred feet. And I was wondering who has the most power here? It's the gas company.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for that Northern Natural Gas.
Okay, uh, with the representative from Northern National, I'd like to come up here. Thank you, Mr. Hall. We may have further questions. Go ahead. Commissioner, you have a question.
Yes, um, maybe you should tell us who you are.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Mitch Kleist, two thousand and nine Mallory Drive, East North Bank Gate, up, and here, representing Northern Natural Gas. Uh, with me have, uh, Michael Chapman, who's our project engineer from Omaha, and, uh, Pat Johnson. And, uh, he is the operations manager for Greater Minnesota Gas, who is, uh, our customers throughout the site.
Question I have, I'm understanding that you folks are regulated by the, uh, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the Pipeline Hazardous Material Safety Administration. So my question I have now is, because at some point, uh, this area is gonna be, uh, it looks like it's gonna be, authorities own for a residential, mixed-use residential.
Sure.
And maybe you could get into a little bit of detail on to your safety, um, program with regard to distribution of gas, how that works, uh, just so we can clear the air here.
Sure. Um, and, you know, Northern Natural Gas, uh, we are the, the highway, so to speak, we're the transmission company. We operate, it's what these stations, these stations are the linchpin, you know, between the transfer point, uh, where natural gas comes off of our high track, uh, high-pressure transmission line. Uh, it is regulated down and metered into the distribution system of our customers. Um, so as far as speaking to the distribution, I would, uh, allow Pat to talk on it, as he was much more well, well-versed in, in their operation. Um, but from a northern perspective, uh, you know, our, our operations folks dedicate their careers to, you know, the safety integrity of our pipelines and pipeline facilities. We are regulated by the FERC. The, uh, policies that we adhere to are extremely stringent. Um, and, you know, this, this pipeline, the main line that, that runs, uh, through New Market was installed in the, in the late forties. Uh, and as we've had a long, we've had a long relationship with the city. Um, I, safety is not even a, uh, it is, it is our highest priority, so.
Uh, question is, now they, it goes from north to west, or is it going west to north?
Sure, and that's, this is kind of a deceiving picture. I did bring a couple maps that are zoomed out, if it would, would help. Um, the whole, the whole reason for this project, uh, so our main line, Nathan, maybe you can, uh, it runs from southwest to northeast there, uh, it's our sixteen-inch main line.
Okay.
There is, there is a line that, uh, runs from, you know, it intersects with that main line and runs to the southeast. You can see that one, is that on the screen? Um, that's, that branch line is about seven, fifteen-hundred feet long and feeds our existing town border station on Dakota Avenue. Um, the whole, the whole reason for this project is, uh, per the FERC. Um, if there's a branch line such as that, that, uh, has grown up around it, uh, over fifty percent of the line is now in a residential area, which, because of Dakota Acres across the street, uh, it is, it falls under that, that line item. Um, so if, if over fifty percent is now residential, we either need to abandon that pipeline or odorize it at the takeoff point. Uh, so those are our, those are our two options. Um, the deadline with the FERC is, is firm, that is, by March of next year, we will have one of those two options accomplished. Um, constructing new town border station is definitely a, a, a better option uh, for, for many ways. Um, Northern is not as well-versed in, in odorization. Our customers, that is their expertise. Uh, so allowing our customer to still handle the odorization at the station, uh, is preferred by both. Um, secondly, and a major benefit, too, not just the city, but even, uh, more so the township, uh, Minnesota Energy Resources is our only customer at the existing town border station. Uh, with this new site, uh, it will allow us to add Greater Minnesota Gas as a customer. They, they, they're primarily serve townships. Um, they currently serve just over two hundred residents in the township as of now, and that number grows every year. Um, their current system, or New Market in general is kind of on the boundaries of their current system limits. Uh, being a customer at this station, you know, not only reinforces their existing infrastructure, but also puts them in a spot where they're going to be able to, you know, uh, I guess accommodate that demand, you know, uh, uh, which is inevitable in this, in this area.
Why?
Any further questions? Uh, that, that was very helpful, by the way, to explain, uh, the infrastructure part of the, the reason for having the station there and what, and that, 'cause I, I didn't see that in the reports, but sure. So that was very helpful to have that information. So any other question for him? Okay, thank you very much. We may have further questions. Uh, did township want to make a comment at this time? Either, either one, whoever wants to come up and talk.
So Scott Clark, New Market Township, it's gonna be a habit to see you guys now.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's good or bad. Um, so a couple, couple things in our discussion. Um, and we talked to Mitch. We said, whatever alternatives, can you pick, can you give, can you come to the board with six potential? You know, we can pick one. Well, you know, he really couldn't, 'cause he talked to all these other landlords. They said, no, 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 no. So, um, I, I don't know how long you guys have been around knowing the, the, I don't know if it's fighting between the city and the township, but Hatfield and Co. It used to be that, we're along really good now. Um, it used to be that we didn't want to annex any land into the city, and now we're, you know, you need land, take it. You know, we're, we're good. Um, working with Denise Christian, since she's not here, but the city planner from Elko New Market. Um, so there's several things that we find wrong with this project. Number, number one, it's, it's servicing the city, and it's not even bordering the city. The property doesn't even border the city. So if you remember when they got the sewer pipe in there, the Met Council did what was called leapfrog development, because Elko New Market in twenty twenty, they were gonna have fifty thousand people. They have five thousand right now. Um, you know, and the Met, Met Council gave the city ten million dollars for that sewer pipe, remember that? City defaulted on nine million of it, stuck the Met Council with nine million dollars, uh, you know, for the payment. Anyhow, that's, it doesn't have much to do with, a little bit, but the leapfrog. So this square of area doesn't touch the city. It's out in the middle of township. The city has their sewers plant out in the middle of township. The city put their school out in the middle of township. So they have all these places that aren't touching the city, so. But yet, we're saying, why don't you annex all the way up to it? And they, they won't annex, you know, so. That's one problem we have, um, leapfrog development. Um, another problem is, I think Mitch mentioned that what triggered this odorization station is fifty percent of the length of the pipe is in the city. So say there's a thousand feet of this stub pipe, this three-inch diameter pipe coming off the main line, thousand feet of it. Right now, they have five hundred feet in the city and five hundred feet- Right now they have five hundred feet in the city and five hundred feet in township with no houses on it, but five hundred feet have houses on it. So I thought maybe a, a simple way to do it was stub off from that northern section. I don't know, do you guys have a laser pointer? Well, I'll walk up, can I walk up there?
Sure.
Can you go back to that previous, that green map you had up there? Yeah, 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 that makes it better. So if the main pipeline comes, kinda like this, so if they could take their three-inch pipeline from here and go down to the station, now they're, they probably have two-thirds non-residential, one-third residential. They wouldn't even have to build an odorization station, they could just keep it all underground, not even touch anything. You follow what I'm saying? So it's just very a three-inch pipe in that field. The other thing is, uh, annex that land into the city. And then, then you don't have to come talk to us or anything, we don't, we don't even matter, you know. Um, we ask for that to happen, um.
Doug.
So the, the.
Mr. Chairman.
Doug, um.
Yes.
Will the city eventually annex that land?
Yes.
Okay.
Next year, actually, actually it could happen tomorrow.
Okay.
So, so that land is owned by an investor, an investor, right, not a farmer? We don't know, somebody sold it a couple of years ago, a farmer sold it to investors, investors got it. And I think, uh, Lennar is under contract to, to build seventy houses in there, okay? Uh, so they came to our, and then why we know this is, is Lennar came to our engineer company, Stan Tech, to bid the engineering on it, Stan Tech said, we're the township's engineer, so we're gonna no bid, you know, Catholic interest, which, which I think. But that'd be ideal, you could have that pipeline run from the north part right under our roads in this development and connect up, and you probably wouldn't have to put an odorization station in for ten years. And then that, then that odorization station would be in the city. I mean, it seems like a simple solution, you know, what triggered, why didn't, why didn't we need that last year? We need it this year, so I mean, we could push it out in our five years or whatever until that thirty-five acres goes into the city. Simple solution, and quite honestly, um. So, so the natural gas company is a utility and they, they pay, charge whatever they want, they charge all of us whatever they want. That's gonna save them money, they won't have to invest hardly anything into it. Say this station is gonna cost millions of dollars, it costs them a couple hundred thousand to run, run the pipe down. So that's saving all of us money, part of the utilities. And it's gonna last some, I'm guessing Mitch, well, if, I don't know, you don't know when it's gonna develop, I don't hear, but it's gonna last in our five years as is, and they still meet the requirement of being less than fifty percent of the pipe would be in the, you know, with houses around it, sixty, seventy percent. I don't, you can do the math, but I didn't put a ruler to it. But you guys follow what I'm saying? That seems like a very simple thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, I have a question from Northern Natural Gas. I only heard him give two options. He said that you either do the station or you shut it down, that's what I heard. And now you're saying you'd like to see a third option, but what happens?
Well, that's an option, that, I'm sorry, that is an option, Mitch said that would be an option, but they, but, you know.
But my question is, if, if those are really the only two options, if, if that, if nothing happens here, if we vote against it, are you gonna shut it down, or what happens in the interim? Because what I'm hearing from you takes some time.
No, no, I think you could dig a three-inch pipe, you can put a three-inch pipe in a lot faster from that northern section than, than it would be to build this, uh.
I get that and I hear that, but I think those are the guys making that decision. And I, I only heard two options from them, and that's my concern. They didn't say that they were gonna look at a third option, or they were gonna work with anybody. So maybe I'll ask the question to you. I heard you said you were gonna either shut it down or build this station. Is there a third option?
Do you wanna step up to the podium and identify yourself, because we are recording here.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, I just don't, I wanna understand.
No, no, and that is, there's a lot going on, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy to clarify. Uh, again, my name's Mitch Kleist, two thousand nine Ballardview Drive, North Bend, Kato. I'm here, uh, representing Northern Natural Gas. Thank you. Perfect, so as of right now, um, the orientation of the pipeline bisects the property. Uh, we need to build the station over the main line, so if you can see from this picture, the orientation of the main line basically is, you know, it's near the south, it's near the southwest quarter of the parcel, it's not further up. So, um, additionally with that, moving, we, the reason we couldn't just move it straight east, three hundred feet, or even with Doug's proposition to, you know, tee off that three-inch line and just run it, you know, uh, parallel with our main line, uh, first off, the, the landowner was, was only agreeable to grant us an easement in this corner of the site. So if we're running a parallel to the northeast corner of the site and try to build the station there, it's not an option simply because the landowner is not agreeable to grant us an easement there. Uh, secondly, with Doug's proposition, even if it was an option with the landowner, running, running that line to the northeast corner, sure, that gets us out of that fifty percent today. But in, again, we don't know the future, how soon that's going to be developed, but our goal is to solve a, a long-term problem, you know, that, not just put a temporary Band-Aid on it and then try to go through this acquisition and permitting process again in, once that area gets developed, um.
Mr. Chairman, so I was gonna ask.
Sure.
If there's no third option, I, I heard a date too, wasn't it March something?
March, March of twenty twenty-two is the date, and, yes, the two options.
And so if you don't, if you, you are either gonna build this or you're gonna shut down what you have, what happens then? What are the ramifications of shutting down what you have? I thought I would just say you were gonna shut down what you had.
Okay, so the two options are move the station to this location, which is our, our proposal, the application. The second option is we would need to odorize the takeoff line, that, that line that takes off from the main line and feeds the existing station, that seventeen hundred feet of pipe would need to be odorized. Both of those scenarios involve a project at this site. Uh, our odorization facilities, just because it is a high-pressure transmission line, there's just a lot more gas flowing through it, involves a lot more sensitive equipment and just more of it as far as odorization goes. So that would still, and from a security standpoint, it would still involve a fenced in area, gravel, includes the building. Um, we would do all of that, but really no benefit to, you know, our customers' operation. With the Town Border Station relocation, we are adding benefit to our customers, which in turn benefits not just the city. We serve hundreds of residents in the township as well. And I, and like I mentioned, um, that does grow every year, so it, it is not just a benefit to the city, but, to that answer.
It does, and you have to have that station on top of your existing line, that's what I heard.
Correct.
That's why.
Cause if we install a branch line, you know, if, if we don't install the ma- main line and install a branch line, inevitably it's putting us in the same position we're in.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if I'm hearing this, uh, correctly, the, uh, station allows for future growth, both in the township and in the city. Yes. Because those customers, your customers serve both the city and the township. Exactly. And inevitably both those will grow, so this is an infrastructure piece that goes in now, but it will be able to accommodate the growth as it comes up. Absolutely. Is that right? Yes, well, so. Is there a position that we're? Thanks. Okay, any further questions? Any further comments, uh? Yeah.
Can you put that previous map up? So Mitch, I think you're misunderstanding what we were saying. No, yeah, yeah, yeah. So you're, you wanna put the odorization station on the main line? Which, which is, which is on, on, well, no, you wanna put it here on the trunk line? A trunk line or main line?
A trunk line, and with this, our current proposal, a trunk line is going to be no more, that will be.
This is gonna be called the main line. So what I'm saying, it's not, not running parallel, I'm saying, put your, put your sta- station right here. Run your pipe down and connect onto this, a van in this portion right here. Take that up, slice into here, and definitely you run a safety center, something different.
I'm just, I'm just, I, I am having some difficulty understanding what different position that was. Okay. I need to have one person having the, we have, we have people talking back and forth here. Just, just for clarity, people who are, would be listening online, but, um, I think you've made your point here, and, and, and.
Okay, well, I mean, you know what, maybe we shouldn't even be here, if there's two options, either they're gonna do it or they're gonna ban it, then why, why, why even ask the township?
Right, well, you know, it's part of our process, so.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, if you guys don't listen to our, so the other thing is, we have, uh, setback ordinance, right? We go up a hundred foot.
Right.
And Idaho Avenue is now, you guys wanna build it twenty feet, which is crazy, I mean, you, so that's why we set three hundred feet. Um, that's a town road, not a city road. Again, those roads that you see on that map, all those roads there should be city roads, cause they sup- uh, support the school structure. So, it sounds, sounds like I'm kinda wasting my time, I mean, you guys got two options. Or, I'm just a mouthpiece, so I'll stay in the room.
Thank you. The podium is open. Start with your name and.
So can you put that other map back? My name is Bruce Regis and I live on, I, I have a farm out there.
Okay.
There you go, that's my place right there.
Okay.
So I am opposed where they're putting it, I was at the township meeting also. And one fact that I did not bring up, that I should have, I own Idaho Avenue, that's my road, that's my driveway. Idaho Avenue is proposed to go from County Road Two, two hundred and fiftieth street. It's proposed to go through there. They cannot build that substation where they wanna build it, because that road needs to be sixty-six feet wide. And if you guys have done your homework, you know that that is a proposed road. So sixty-six feet plus a hundred feet per New Market Township setback, that's a hundred and sixty-six feet. They have to stay away from my property. Follow me? So I don't know how you guys can vote on this tonight without doing a little bit more homework. I, I just, I don't understand now.
That's a good question, we'll, we'll get a response from staff on that, because we need to have the answer on that, that's a, that's a good question.
Okay, now I got the school out there about twelve years ago.
Right.
And I was the only one against that school because it was put up on my property. They interman domain my road where you see the red intersect there. So they interman, interman domain me in order to make the city, make it a city road. So that school could be in the city, or else I was, I was the holdup. So they interman domain my driveway to make it a city. And I'm getting kinda tired of it. So like I say, I don't know how you guys can, can make a decision on this tonight, it sounds like you guys have made your decision already. So I just want you to keep that in consideration too. One other point I was gonna make, why don't you just buy a piece of land? Instead of a perpetual easement, buy a piece of land, move it out where it's not gonna hurt anybody. And I'll tell you what, that's gonna be city someday, guys, in the near future. So fifty percent of that line they're moving because of population, what are they gonna do next? It's gonna be city. They're, they're just doing over what they have. They've got it in the city, the city's gonna be on top of it again. They're not going far enough out. As far as the trees and the vegetation they wanna plant, I want no part of that. They, nothing but a snow block out there for me. I'm not gonna be pushing snow. So that's all I have to say, so I, I'd like some answers.
Can I have staff address the setback and, uh, the road, uh, some clearance on those roads there? And who's the road authority first? Maybe Marty can help me out on that.
So this being the city street that goes out to the church on the left-hand side of the drawing, it's actually on the south side of the project. This being Idaho Avenue, which is Mr. Regis's driveway, is, so it, it's shown on a future street map that this would be a future, future public road. But there is no right-of-way, does the township have any right-of-way? So. Yeah, so this is Idaho Avenue here to the south.
Yeah, over to the south.
How about to the north of the city street? So Idaho Avenue goes south but doesn't go north, but it's probably on a flat street. Yeah. Okay, so the township plows, plows that portion of your driveway? Okay, so it's probably an easement that the township might have over Mr. Regis's property.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, Marty, Mr. Chair, just so the other board members, so, just so this is all clear, to the other board members, it's a township road.
That's my understanding from what Mr. Kleist is saying, that the township maintains the.
Township road.
Yep.
Thank you.
So what, what setback the building, so there's a couple buildings here on the west side of the parcel. This is a fifty-foot setback here to this line. Our setback for, um, utility buildings is fifty feet. Uh, this is an urban expansion area. Uh, our normal setback from a township street would be thirty-five for a structure. Uh, because these are utility buildings, we have a little bit larger setback of fifty feet, and the buildings are even a little bit further away than fifty, and they're probably closer to sixty feet from that western boundary.
So they satisfy the setbacks.
Satisfy county setback, yes.
Right, that's, that was, uh, the question, that, that, how it could be built there. And that the setback is actually from, from the road, right?
Yep, and access to the facility would be here from the city street.
Okay. Are there any other questions for, after this time?
Has, uh, Mr. Chairman, has our, uh, county attorney, assistant county attorney looked at this at all?
Assistant county attorney did review the letter that you received from Northern Natural Gas here tonight, and he, for the most part, he concurs with what is in that letter. We have some control over some building setbacks, some aesthetic standpoints, but if we get into moving the facility around and safety matters, we don't have a lot of control there. We can ask, but if we don't get it, like Brad said, I don't think we're gonna go to, go to task on that.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
I have one more question for Northern Natural Gas, sorry.
Thank you.
Let's pretend that this, all the land around it gets developed.
Yep.
Uh, what then, how long is that station good for? Does it make a difference on the station, is the station obsolete, if it's got developed property around it?
Doesn't, yeah.
Tell me what the future looks like.
Sure, absolutely, um, so, do I need to introduce myself again? Just hey, for that record, Mitch Kleist, representing Northern Natural Gas, thank you for the question. Um, like mentioned before, the reason we're in this spot right now is because over fifty percent of that branch line that runs from this proposed location to the existing Town Border Station has now been developed, in a residential area. Um, our main line, uh, where we are proposing the station, is, is actually a hundred miles long. Starts in Welcome, Minnesota, and runs all the way just across, uh, on the east side of I-35, Lakeville. So, um, it's a hundred miles long, so even if this entire area gets developed, obviously it, there's a lot of cornfields between Welcome and New Market, so there's, it's really, it's not in jeopardy of, you know, going over that cusp of being fifty percent residential. So this, moving the station here is, you can never say a hundred percent permanent, but it is foreseeable, foreseeable, long-term solution. Okay. Thank you, is there any other comments, uh, through the public hearing? Anyone else like to make comments on this application?
Anyone else like to make comments on this application? And we still do not have anyone online? Okay, just wanted to check. At this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Henshaw to have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed, at this time, I'll entertain a motion, there's a discussion on the side.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I feel Mr. Regis is getting the short end of the stick here, uh, Mr. Regis is sort of getting the short end of the stick, if he's saying it's a township road up to the curve. No, did you say, pardon me? Okay. I, I hope somebody said it was to the curve, no? Okay. The, the township said it, it's a township road up to where it curves to his property, and he's saying it's not a township road, only up to the intersection, the rest of it's his driveway. I know, I'm just, I'm saying that's what he said, yeah.
Any other comments on discussions? I'll entertain a motion this time.
Mr. Chair? Based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the conditional use permit for Northern Natural Gas to establish a natural gas meeting station.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hartman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. I have any, uh, further discussion before I call for a roll call vote? Okay, at this time, I'll call for the roll call vote. Commissioner Henshaw? Uh, Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haag?
Yes.
Uh, motion is approved, uh, we've, uh, approved this, thank you for your input and thank you for everyone who came to the safety, uh, to, uh, holler and put on this. So this motion is approved and, uh, um, you can't fight this. We have the, uh, staff report, the plan manager report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, questions? Uh, report on the items that went to the county board for their approval based on your recommendation. Back on August seventeenth, the board did approve the request for rezoning preliminary and final plot of Pine Ridge, creating two lots on ten acres in New Market Township. Also approved the preliminary and final plot of Brahma Edition, creating two lots on five acres in New Market Township. They approved the preliminary and final plot of Vergis Estates, creating two lots in Spring Lake Township. They approved the preliminary and final plot of the Fieldstone Industrial Park that created ten lots, uh, that also is a three-way development agreement with Messingbring Construction in New Market Township. On September seventh, they approved the preliminary and final plot of the Herbert Edition, creating two lots in New Market Township, and the preliminary and final plot of Noblo Edition, creating two lots also in New Market Township. So a lot of activity in New Market Township in the last several months. Um, that's all I have for an update. We are expecting, um, several public hearings in October, um, so it could be, um, a larger crowd and a larger agenda than what we had tonight. Um, we have potentially five public hearings for conditional use permits looking to locate in the Fieldstone Industrial Park in New Market Township. There was a discussion in July and August with this board, with this commission. So we're expecting public hearing notices will go out on those five projects, and we might get a lot of interest in those projects, so be prepared for that. Um, that's all I have for an update.
I have a question, this is, we're not on the air or anything, I believe.
We still are on the air, too, we are.
We are.
We're recording.
Commissioner Henshaw first.
I'm sorry, um.
Go ahead.
It, it bothers me that the township board seems to take this personally, you know, I heard him say, what are we here for? Is there some way we could reach out to them and sit down and say, look, you know, this is your job and this is our job, and sometimes the votes don't match? We've had those meetings, but I, I hate to see him walk out feeling like.
Well, I, I'd hate being accused of being predetermined.
Well, yeah, I.
I didn't know what I was gonna vote tonight till I got here.
Yeah, I didn't either, but I mean, is there some way, you know, we, we've had our differences and we work through them and, and try to get educated and, and come together as a group. Is there some way to offer something to them so they can?
It seems like, and it's an observation, that sometimes decorum is edging down a little bit with people at public meetings.
Yeah.
And would you all agree with me on this, on what we've seen over the years?
Yeah.
With people, you know, responding back like that, and, and, and I think it's inappropriate, I think it's not professional.
Well, I, I didn't say it was appropriate or professional.
No, no, no.
I just felt bad that they walk out of your feelings like that.
Right, and you're saying that.
Feelings, yeah.
Yeah, that their expectation, and we have talked about training and sending staff out.
Yeah.
To get our function and their function, so they understand that, uh, you know, and, um, you know, I, I, I think that, that sometimes that's, that's difficult, and we've talked about, about this, you know.
For the most part, we take their recommendation.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So it works two ways, but.
But they don't come a lot of times and they don't see.
Yeah.
The board has the, the benefit of seeing all the applications that come over, and we know, you know, when we approve things and, 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 and that we do take into consideration all of their recommendations, but they are not here every month, you know, and every meeting.
Well, I, I can be tough, I was just being a gentle soul, I, you know, when he said, what are we here for, I thought, yeah, come on.
Yeah.
I sense that there's, oh, there is, and maybe there's gonna continue to be some conflict with New Market Township Board, I mean, you may even mention they've had issues with the city of New Market.
Yeah.
And, you know, we heard from Doug Quast, and I, we've heard from Doug Quast in the past, and that doesn't mean that he's representing the other two supervisors of New Market Township. This is his opinion.
Is he the chair?
No. Anyway, um.
So, yes, and I appreciate your.
Brad, um, if there's something, uh, else that's gonna be coming up, um, you know, I'm hoping up north a lot, so when I am home, I'm like, if there's some research I need to do, prepping ahead of time, is there anything else coming up in the county public hearing that, uh, might be controversial that I can start doing a little legwork on?
Nothing immediate, like I said, I think October will be, um, filled with those hearings. Uh, the FMFC's organic recycling facility could be coming over the winter or maybe spring, a lot of tracks. It could be a spring project where.
Which township is that?
The Louisville, Louisvilleville Township, that's the proposed location. That one might generate a lot of interest, um, so if you wanted to bone up on any project on the horizon, that's probably one of them.
I don't need to do any research there, I know it's blindfolded.
That's all I have for an update. Any other questions for?
Getting back to the market township, do we get the whole story? You know, he said it's a township road up to the curve, he said, no, it's not, so.
There's, there's property owner and township board, and they both hit different opinions on, on what was the legal. Yeah, we can't, from our records and, and looking, we can't see that that's a township road, so we'll have to verify that, of course, but, uh, to our records, it's not a township road.
And, and Barb, when he got up here the first time, he drew it, he drew it way over to the east, and then the second time he came back, when he said, no, no, it's right over here, so he changed his, changed what he was telling us, right, yeah, please laugh, and I mean, he changed it right in front of us.
But, uh, clear, uh, let's talk about township roads in general, or county roads, uh, just so you know this, the landowner does own up to the middle of the road.
And county roads.
County roads. And township roads, right? They own to the middle of the road, but, you know, they're paying taxes on it, but it's an easement by the township or the county to use that land. So that's why people can come and harvest grass in the ditches, they can ride their four-wheelers in the ditches, they can drive down the roads, they have an easement to use that property. Yeah, Freejust might own up until the middle of the road, but he doesn't own the road.
Well, the township's taking care of it, plowing it and everything, I heard.
I didn't know that, and I knew it was with the county, 'cause I live on the county road, and my plaque was right dead center, and I tried to put up a little toll booth, they wouldn't let me. Yeah, I'm always kidding. So, but, but they do, but they, but they do, they do plot some lots on the county road, I didn't know if they did that on.
Right, so, so I think Commissioner Hartman read on, if it's not plotted property, you typically do own to the center of the road and the road authority has its easement for transportation purposes on your property. When land gets plotted, um, the proper dedication for that right-of-way goes directly to the government unit, others to accommodate the township or mid-eye, so then they own it. But if the door gets plotted, typically it is an easement.
So, but, because of inimanda domain, they would always have that unless they, unless they abandoned it and then would go back to the property.
Right.
And that, and that would happen.
The property owner on both sides of the road.
Right, right.
Each get half.
They would get half, if they.
Years back, townships recorded all their township roads, it was a big deal, I was clerk at the time, and it went back to some lots at Warfneck, voted somebody else at Carver County, and they were trying to say that this wasn't legal to record these roads because the net did show a lot of these, so, you know.
So, but do all the townships do that then? Do they?
I think all of them did it in Scott County.
Okay. So somewhere there's.
Clarified everything.
Somewhere there's.
There'd be a recorded record.
Yeah.
On, on where those, that road is, that would answer that question for both of them.
But this driveway would not be recorded, you know.
Right.
That's not, there's no.
That's the one, too.
It's private.
It feels like it's all private, we'll verify that.
And, and you know, the screening they were proposing is about the best screening we've ever seen for a project.
Yeah.
With pine trees and triple rows and, but he will get, his driveway's gonna get blocked.
No, no, I want to point that out too.
Okay.
In the wintertime, the wind comes predominantly from the northwest, and if there would be any drifts, it wouldn't be on that driveway, it would be southeast of the, uh, trees and stuff.
Right.
More of the station. You're right, curls around that way.
And I don't know if it's driveway is up high or if it's way low, and that makes a difference to.
Same level, straight level.
Just on planning intent for staff. Uh, this is the first time we've seen an infrastructure, but if there's like an interstate highway coming through, you'd have the same thing, railroads have the same right-of-way over everything, don't they?
Mm-hmm.
That, that they, I mean, you can't block where a railroad goes, but it would be good at some time, maybe in one of our future meetings, and we just have a discussion on this for future, that kind of infrastructure, because it probably won't be the last time we see something like this, and it helps us when we have a little background about what we're actually talking about in terms of regulating, just, you know, you can't move it, you can't do a lot of things, are federally regulated, you know, and other than complying with some of our requirements that's, you know, like screening and things like that.
Yeah, when it comes to pipelines and transmission lines, we've heard loud and clear that we cannot.
Right.
Zone it out of the county.
Right.
Allow it.
And inevitably we'll have more of that.
Yeah.
All the time, so.
Right, which even, the question, you aren't regulated at all, I think, I think we've had some, kind of been in situations like this where you get the trees or a city, uh, greater bumper, so you doesn't overgrow their trails, I think the utilities work with people to do those things, but I don't think they're gonna move it three hundred feet up.
And, and correct me, uh, Elko and Market does not have an orderly annexation process or don't they designate stuff around the city? I know we, that Prior Lake has that, and some of the other cities in the county does, because you look at how close this is, I mean, this is gonna be in the city in a, in not a long period of time, I think.
They, it's a different setup, they don't have a, a large geographic area where they have an agreement, they do it.
Parcel by parcel.
Development by development, situation by situation.
Okay, okay.
You know, I wish there was some way to explain to, to the New Market guy that, look at all the stuff we put up on the board and the, uh, gas companies here with all the answers, and then he, he brings nothing.
Right.
And he just gets up and presents a couple different things pointing at the wall and.
Well, and, and, and our job is to consider the application before us.
Yes, yeah.
And, and that's.
And the proof that we see from both sides.
Right, exactly, and that's, and that's kind of bringing people back to that, that's, that's what we're doing, so.
Um, the last couple weeks, I reached out to both property owners.
That's, exactly.
Uh, two eighty-two that have the solar gardens, uh, Jean Howard and, uh, make, make you happy, and they both seemed very receptive of doing something on their own to add more trees along the eighty-two.
Oh, that's great.
So I told them if they had any questions, they should call you, Brad.
Yeah, that's fine, that's a great idea, glad to make some progress there.
Well, something to do.
They're looking for spare trees.
Good community project.
They're looking for spare trees, I might send them right back to the.
Could you call my neighbor and get him to put more trees in between? You seem to have a knack for it.
Thank you very much, uh, Brad, uh, anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Um, a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Dale, again, uh, great job, good evening.